Just testing the microphones. You good?
It works.
Well, good evening, good afternoon, I guess it is. We welcome you to our study meeting of the West Valley City Council. We'll begin this electronic meeting with the required electronic statement. Pursuant to Utah Code, West Valley City has determined that this meeting will be held electronically, without an anchor location, given the ongoing novel coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. West Valley City has determined the pandemic presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at an anchor location. This meeting will be held electronically. Members of the press and public are invited to view this meeting live on YouTube All right. We do have a quorum present, one, two, three, four, five, six. Councilman Hune will be joining us later. So we have six in attendance, that's a quorum. With that then, although, let's see, approval of minutes, March 9th is our next item.
I would move for approval of the March 9th minutes.
Second.
Okay, and hearing no further comments, then we will, without objection, the minutes will be approved. And hearing no objections, then the voting is unanimous, the minutes are approved. Next, we will review quickly our meeting later tonight, our meetings, I should say, later tonight, our regular meeting, and then the RDA meeting. There were no changes that I'm aware of, any additional questions or concerns, the agendas are pretty short. Hearing none, we'll go on to Resolution 21-42, authorize expenditures for the Utah Veterans Memorial Park. And Wayne is...
Yes, I'm here, Mayor.
Yeah.
So, no new information to... Yeah, thank you, Mayor, so no new information to present tonight, this is really just to get the ball rolling to decide one way or the other. Do we want to go forward with this project or not? There is one bit of additional potential funding information to be brought forward, I don't think I mentioned this last week, but we found a a grant program to apply for matching funds, so that could be another possible source to match the $500,000 contribution that the city would be making under this resolution, but it doesn't change the need, we still would need that 500 to get going forward, so with that, Mayor, I would entertain any other questions or be able to bring back any other information that anybody may have forgotten from the previous week's discussions.
Okay, Council? No questions. Okay. Then I guess we'll move on.
Okay.
If there are concerns, it might be wise to, Council, maybe discuss them a little bit before we bring it to our regular meeting next week. What?
So I've had all of my questions and concerns answered, so I'm good.
Okay. Well, this is, this is a quiet night, I don't know, I'm gonna have to prod people to get them to say anything. Okay, then, we'll go to the next item, Resolution 21-43. This is to approve an amendment to our inter-local agreement between ourselves and the county for the issue of security services at West Valley County Library. So, Wayne, is that you, or is the chief going to handle this?
The chief may be here, she also was gonna be a little late for this meeting, so I'm not sure if she's on yet or not, if she's not, I can take care of it.
Scott Buchanan is on, so maybe he's going to take it.
Very good, that'd be great, thank you, Scott.
There we go.
You're on, go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon, Council. My name's Scott Buchanan, Deputy Chief in the Police Department, and I am speaking to you about a request for an adjustment and a renewal to our inter-local agreement with Salt Lake County Library, just located right behind City Hall. And this is a very minor adjustment to that contract, it's only increasing the remittance or reenueration that the city receives from Salt Lake County is increasing by $5. This is in line with the change that the Police Department made about maybe four, five, six months ago, where the rate of pay was moved from $45 to $50 an hour for the officers. And that $5 difference is part of the administrative fee. So we are moving this particular contract in line with the other secondary employment functions that we have across our agency. So the rate of pay for the employees, the officers, is 50, and then the $5 comes back to the city, the purpose of that $5 is for costs associated with the use of equipment, including vehicles, and any administrative costs. And I welcome any questions.
Council, any questions, comments? Doesn't seem to be any, so, well, I'll make a comment. Certainly, this issue is important to the city, because West Valley Library, of course, is right here by, in the center of our city, right by our city offices, and there have been issues that need security there. And that is going to continue, the particular concerns that have manifested themselves in our society, and with some of the changes that have taken place with the homeless, and where they were, and things like that. So there are myriad of problems that it's good to have security there, and so... Looks good.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Chief, what about the other library in the city?
The Hunter Library has, to my knowledge, never requested the same service. This came about through a request from the library, Salt Lake County's library, in our parking lot. And so that's why we've engaged with them, we've always had good relationships with both libraries. Our library, here close to the building, just felt the need for the additional security, and they connected with us in about 2018, I believe, is when this started, to make sure that they had officers available because of the increase in the need for police services there.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Yeah, I believe that there are several factors entering into that, the most being location. End of the tracks line, near the mall, in the center of the city, et cetera, et cetera, so...
They have been, Salt Lake County's library there has been pleased with the service that they've received to date, and they wanted to continue that.
Yeah, yeah. Hearing no further comments? Okay, we'll go to the next item. Scott, thank you. We'll bring up, let's see, Application PUD-1, 2020, filed by Russell Platt, final Platt approval for, I think it's Alpesar Planned Unit Development. And I think I saw, yeah, Mr. Lehman online, so, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Steve Lehman, Community and Economic Development Department. And you did get the name right, it is the Alpesar property. Mr. Russ Platt is requesting final approval for this development, and we'll have a few photographs for you here in just a second. This property will be familiar to the Council, in that in August 2020, you approved a rezone for this project. The property is located at about 4565 West, 3500 South. And I'm getting some feedback online, and are you all the same?
Yes.
Steve, why don't you go ahead, I'm not sure it's you, I think it's a general issue, we'll have Eric and Sam and Kosh over there, see if they can track it down.
Okay. So, this property is located at 4565 West, 3500 South. It was rezoned from the C2 zone to the RM zone. And it is located just to the south of the city park and the animal shelter. We can go to the next slide. The property was previously used as a used car sale. And there is still a used car sales lot up in the northwest corner, as you can see there. The next illustration is the site plan that shows how the project will lay out, where the open spaces are, and how the units will fit into the project. We can go to the next slide. Appreciate Eric doing this for me. So on the, on this illustration, the left side is 3500 South. So there are two unit types here, there's the east unit at the top of the screen, and the west units on the bottom of the screen. The east units are 1,950 square feet. The west units on the bottom part of this illustration are 1,750 square feet. All units have a three-car, or excuse me, a three-bedroom home. And units on the north side, excuse me, on the east side, will have two-car garage and a driveway. Units on the west will all have a two-car garage with guest parking, as you can see on the illustration. The project is supposed to have open space. And you can see that here in this illustration too, this is the actual subdivision plat that you'll be approving. And then we do have a couple of photos to show you, very similar to what you would have reviewed during the rezone application. So I'll have Eric scroll through those. This is a view looking from 3500 South to the south. Once again, the units on the left are on the east side, units on the west would be the larger unit. Materials here, as approved in the development agreement, on the main floor will be tile, and the materials on the second and third floor will be fiber cement siding and stucco. As you can tell, these are very urban-looking units. And we have just a couple other illustrations for you. Eric can just continue to scroll through these. All of the units will have a rooftop patio. Mr. Platt has been very successful incorporating that into the design of these buildings, especially in Cobalt Landing, just east of Redwood Road, adjacent to the old AA Callister's building. And this is the last slide that shows how they anticipate the common space being used, both a play structure and some picnic tables. They will have a walking path around the development to serve as one of their amenities. So, once again, this is the final flat application of the Alpesar PUD, and that is our report.
Council, any questions?
I have a couple. So Steve, the furthest south units, are they three stories as well?
So, there are two types, so on one half of the street, yes, they are three stories. They are set back quite a ways, there is an old canal right-of-way that's adjacent to the south property. So there's a fairly healthy setback distance from residential properties to the south.
So I'm only seeing a 16.9-foot difference or space there?
Yeah, so, right, so that's to property line. So that, what, they're landscaping that area. I'll see if I can pull this up here, that's at the far southwest corner, the more you go east, the further the buildings become away from the property.
East is the top, right?
Yes, so there's the 16 and a half feet, and that darker line that you might see on the plat is actually the center line of the canal. So there's additional property from that darker line to the back of the residential properties. And I believe that's an additional 12 feet, so there's probably roughly 28 to 30 feet.
Okay.
And we're still working with the Canal Company, the Canal Company, as we understand, is not active in this area. Public Works Department went out and determined that there wasn't, the canal was not being used for storm drain purposes. So our expectation is that the Canal Company will essentially abandon this portion of the canal so that the fence can be right at the back of the existing residential properties.
And I think I'm still concerned with three-story townhomes next to, I'm not sure if these are split levels or not, to the south of it, and I just think that's too tall for next to residential that just has a normal height of a house. So I still have concerns with the last two, let's see, what are they called, unit 19 and 20, and then 23, 24, and 25. I just think if those were two-story, they'd fit in a lot better than a three-story looking over into people's yards. And with 30 feet, I'm not sure that that's enough setback for that.
Mr. Lehman?
Yes.
In this decision, do we have authority to to put those kind of stipulations on that, or or is this one of the ones where we're just checking the box that because they've they have satisfied all of the legal requirements?
It is a planned unit development, and so conditions can be attached here. The city does have a development agreement that we entered into when we did the rezone. I'm more than happy to have this discussion with Mr. Platt to see what his thoughts are on the south units, to see what provisions they could incorporate to make those two-story, I'm not sure, I haven't had that conversation with him.
Especially with the PUD, we have the authority, the restrictions we feel are necessary. So I think to really think about the residence to the south, I think it's our responsibility to make sure that the maximum of two-story for those that are so close. To me, 22 and 21 are far enough away, that I don't think it's quite as intrusive as those other five I listed.
Steve, I remember looking at this before, and we, with the rezone, had the development agreement, we added some things like the masonry wall and so forth, I think we discussed the height of the unit, but we must not have included that at the time. Am I remembering that right?
I know from the development agreement, there is a masonry wall requirement on the south side, as well as next to the easy auto cells. I don't recall, I certainly will go back and look, Steve Pastrick handled the rezone, and I will go back and look to see if there was anything in the height restriction. Developer would have had that agreement as well, so I don't recall seeing anything that restricted them. Certainly, we'll go back and look through minutes to make sure that everything's done right here.
But everything in this application must comply with the previous, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Steve, my memory, as I remember it, Mrs. Lang did mention the height of the units, I don't know, don't remember whether we came to a final conclusion as a council or not, but I know she was concerned at that time, too.
Thank you, that's very helpful, I'll look for that information.
Being at this stage of the discussion, just want to make sure that this is an issue that most of the Council would like to hear addressed by, not if head, I know we're Councilwoman Lang, Dawn, Jake.
Well, my thoughts, Mayor, we already worked through the development agreement, if it's complying with that, I would approve this, however, when Steve goes back and talks to the developer, if he's willing to reduce the height of those buildings voluntarily, I have no problem with that at all.
Okay, so, okay to go and have the discussion, but within the boundaries that we are limited to.
Well, it depends on the rest of the Council, that's just my position.
Well, yeah, the statement of that position was that if we're allowed to do that, you know, there's two ways to approach it, there's, you have to do it versus would you consider doing it, I guess, trying to work with the developer? So, any other comments to add to that? Hearing none, we will go next to Application SMI-10, 2020, filed by Federico Camposano, final Platt approval for Lars Ridge subdivision at, have to be careful touching my mouse here, 3181 South, 40th West. Mr. Lehman, are you gonna handle this as well?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As mentioned, Federico Camposano is requesting final Platt approval for a two-lot subdivision on property that's approximately .55 acres. There would be two lots as a result of the subdivision of this property. We'll go to the next slide, which will illustrate this a little bit better, the property is currently vacant. The back portion of this property was divided out a number of years ago, and so this ends up being a relatively large lot. The proposal here is to create two lots, which essentially are in this configuration, the next slide shows the subdivision plat itself. So you can see the lots here, Lot 1 is just under 10,000 square feet. The flag lot is over 14,000 square feet, if you minus out the driveway or the flag, you end up with a lot that's over 12,000 square feet in size. The proposal here is to build two single-family homes on Lot 1, fronting 40th West, and the other back lot, not sure how the position the home on that. To help with access on 40th, the property owners asked for an easement over Lot 2 to serve as Lot 1, which will probably have a detached garage or a garage that would sit behind the home. And that is our report.
Council?
Steve, you might remember that I'm generally against flag lots, so I have a I don't win on that argument, because they are allowed by our ordinance, so this one has the issue of the frontage and the variance there, but since that has already been resolved in the Board of Adjustments, is this just a regular administrative action that we basically have to approve?
Yes, so the developer petitioned the Board of Adjustment for frontage variance a number of years ago. Not this particular person, it was the person that preceded him in ownership. And the Board of Adjustment did find in favor of the variance, granted that approval, so then this just becomes an administrative action.
Thank you.
That driveway, though, will be a private driveway, not a street?
Correct, it'll be a private driveway.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll go on to the next item on our agenda. Under Communications, we have an update from Senator Karen Main. We appreciate having her here, and welcome her. So as soon as she's...
There I am.
There, you're unmuted. Time is yours, Senator Main.
Thank you very much, but I have one really important question before we start. Karen, I'm bringing my pots down, no, do I bring them with the dirt or without the dirt?
Without the dirt, please.
Hey, that's, that was important, so we had to get that out of the way, so, 'cause I was carrying...
Save the little pot inside as well.
Okay, if I can find that, I sure will, but I was dragging around the yard, and oh my golly, okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate you. Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming and letting me speak to you. I come to you every year after the session, and especially this year. We had several things that involves West Valley. You know, whenever, whatever legislation I pass, usually that you're involved with, I work for Nicole and the other two entities that I represent. And we had some hard lifts this time, and I'd like to give thanks to the other mayors around the art here, but it was a, it was a family that moved some of these pieces of legislation. I'd like to speak to you first of all about the metro township. I just about had to go to Senator to Senator to Representative to Representative because many of them didn't even know what the metro township was. And what happened with the metros is that when they became their own entity, that the only thing they didn't have, because we didn't think we needed at the time, was the utility tax that you all have. And all the cities have it, and it's a tool you have. And they did not have that. So as time goes on, Salt Lake County has cut the cord for the metros, and they needed that, that other tool. So I talked to the mayor of West Valley, and I mean, West Jordan and Nicole all the time also. And so we made that happen, but it was a poll. Obviously, we want all our communities around us to be healthy. And we want the metros to succeed. They are an entity to themselves, and we know what happens if the metros don't succeed. And so I appreciate your support on that one. And we had really good counsel, Salt County, of course, because, you know, they needed that to happen, but we were very supportive. Lake City Town supported with that, with us. The other thing is, this came to me about two years ago, and it just didn't fit two years ago, but it does now. And I spoke to Nicole and Mayor Taylorsville and the metro township mayor and my Magna and Midville, the communities around us, the ones that have high diversity. And this piece of legislation says that you don't have to be a citizen to be a police officer. And why this attracted me is the issue that we have. We can't fill those diversity slots. And when you go into the military, you don't have to be a citizen to be in the military. You know that? You don't, it hasn't ever been. And the firefighters, many fire departments in the state of Utah, they are not citizens either. And I had a vet call me, and he called me on the phone when he saw this legislation, and he said, I served with many that were not citizens, and chokes me up. And he said, Senator, I'll walk to the front of the line with them. And, and he told me the story about how they deserved it more than any. It's just they weren't, they just didn't fit. So I passed this legislation is, is they have to do everything. They have to go to post. They have to have background checks, no different than our officers, no different. The only thing, and what, what you're getting is the like refugees, people that have come here, that they just, they're on the way to citizenship, or they've come from countries that they just can't put it together. You have the Dreamers. And so I passed it in the Senate, but on the other side, I had Representative Wilcox call me, and he said, you know, I'm going to put something in the bill. And I said, oh, don't mess the bill up. He said, no, no. So he put permanent residence, and it passed. Permanent residence opens the doors for the Dreamers. And so this piece of legislation is passed. I think in the next little while, there'll be federal legislation to take care of that. But from that, we had, I had a fellow call me from Park City that he was a Dreamer, and he was in the cadet service of the the, like, Boy Scouts cadets they had in their police force in Park City. And he was in, he was going to go to college. I, he called me from Washington, DC. And he went through everything, and then he found out because he, he didn't have citizenship. All the other guys and the other kids that were in the cadet, like Boy Scouts, went in to be police officers, and he couldn't because he didn't have that. And so when this passed, he called me from Washington, DC, and said he was doing an internship. He says, I'm coming home. He said, I'm going to be a police officer. So, I mean, where we live, that really, I think we did a really good thing. We did a really good thing with that, so. The other thing that I wanted to speak to you about, there's other, this is just my legislation, and I, some of it is applicable to you. One that's interesting, I tried to do this about three years ago, and the hospital's hair was on fire. So I passed a small one, but this one is that medical, your medical file and history, that you have to pay for that. And like if you have a lawyer, I saw bills of fourteen thousand dollars, seven thousand dollars that especially someone that has like lots of issues, back problems or an accident or anything. If they have a lawyer, they have to pay for each piece, and you can't even get yours. You have to pay for that. So what it says is electronically, I mean, if they have to go through the paper, you know, go through the files physically, that's something else. But electronically, all they do is push a button to make a ton of money, just send it. So now is that if you are needs-based, that's like if you have disabilities or things like that, or an accident, then you get it for one year for nothing. So if you want your report, one year for nothing. And then the rest of us that just wants to see our stuff, you get it twenty-five dollars a year. So you pay twenty-five dollars, and like if you want to go to another doctor, they just send it electronically. But, well, what happens too, like the lawyers pay it, and then they have the client pay it, and then they jack it up for the work of pushing the button. So I think that's, that's just the right thing to do. They, the one, oh, my golly, the one that West Valley brought to me was the public notice bill. And I, I had no pleasure in this bill because it takes away jobs, and, you know, I'm not a month into that. But it needed to happen. We, there was no way that our cities can function the way that they did. So I knew if I took it, I'd have control of it to make sure that it was appropriate. I worked with the media coalition. That's, you know, it's a hard thing for them, but they knew where we're coming. So the piece of legislation says that public notices, and the problem that you all have, and especially the smaller communities, is that they have to have notification on Tuesday before four o'clock printed. Well, there's no way they can do that, and many times there's no newspaper to do that. So the legislation says that if everything, all the requirements are made, like email, it says email, mail, you know, those contacts need to be made, but print, no. As long as you've done what you needed to do, then the print piece is not there. But what happens is like in your community, what you will do is all your information will go to the state website. And from there, they can harvest the information. So everything goes there, and they, they have the capacity to do that. They do it anyway, so I made sure they have the capacity to do. And then like the media can go in and see what West Valley's doing, when they're going to do it. You know, what you choose to do, your poster, whatever, but it doesn't have that print component. But everything else needs to, whatever that component is for for notification has to be met. As long as that's met, the one component, the print is not there. So you can imagine what I had a hard lift. I sent out kudos. West Valley guided me on this, and I, all the city, city and Lake City Town supported up. It needed to happen, whether it was me or somebody else, but I trust me better than somebody else to make sure that they were going farther. Some of, some other entities, you know, Karen, me too, me too. I said, no, we're going to, you know, those things can come. This is what needs to be done for my cities to make sure, you know, it, it just, it just needed to be because there's no outlet to make it happen any other way. I had some good lobbyists. I'll tell you, I sent them out. They were on the hunt because we really had to work each legislator at a time to make sure that it was the right component for that. I have some other things, but those are the ones that I think affect us. There was one other bill that, talking to council, we had our choice. We wanted, we needed the metro to get done. We needed the public notice to get done. The other one that was in the mix, and Magna brought this to me, and I spoke to West Valley about it and West Jordan about it, is that there's predators. I'm going after them next time because I don't like these guys. But we laid this to the side, is that they, they go out, they search nationwide in older communities, and they, and they go through the code enforcement pieces. And they go and say, okay, here's Karen. She's got a big lot. She's had all these code violations, and she just can't take care of it, and they can see the history. So they go to Karen that owns a farm and says, you know, I'll buy it from you. You know, you've got all this code enforcement. We're going to take that away, and they cheat people. Magna has been especially hit. And so people have just, well, I'll give you a hundred thousand dollars right now. And then, you know, they're going to be bugging you. You can't keep the weeds down. It's predatory. And they, they, and we have an older community, some areas are older, and, and I don't like this. And so I'm going to go looking at this. I've talked to some of the other older communities, but usually it's California people, outside people that come in, but Magna had an in-house person do it, too. That's all public information, people's code violations. I, I'm not crazy about that happening. So just, that's what I'm going to be looking at next time. It was just, we had two giant ones to pull, and we needed those to happen. The only thing that's, I think, for you, I just picked up, we got the big transportation bill. I was in a conversation with Senator Harker yesterday, so that's a good thing. We need things moving. There's a list of those. And it's not, this list is the needed thing. It's not who wants it and who's in leadership. Well, kinda, but it's not, it's pretty fair and square, the new list. So I can send that to you if you want, but it's going, it's going to help the, the west side. Another thing that I thought was interest is we got rid of, you know, your registration. Nobody knows. You know, they're all, we're all going to go to jail because they don't send you a postcard anymore. And so we fixed that. So they're going to either email you or send you a postcard. I was caught up in that because my car is fairly new. I thought, whoa, whoa. And then I got something that said, you better check it. Guess what? Mine was always almost overdue, so we're going to fix that. We updated the alcohol. They're going to get a raise. Thanks goodness. That was just horrible. We're fighting for them for years. And so we, they, we did a lot of modernization and and really things that needed to be done to for our alcohol facilities, which makes us bajillionaires from. We did a lot on domestic violence, as you saw. I won't go through so many of these. If there's anything you, a lot of mental health, a lot of suicide. We're very high in suicides in this state. I mean, like at the top, like one or two or three. So we did a lot on that. I won't go, we had the emergency fight. That was a fun fistfight of what the emergency power should be between the governor and the legislature. We had things about the rioters. That was, so there's legislation to that. We did a lot on elections. A lot of legislation was there. The transgender bills, we had two of them. I gave a letter to, it came to me from a legislator in Idaho, a personal letter that told me about the devastation, the financial devastation about passing any of these bills. And I gave it to the senator. The NCAA did not come there. California companies will not come there because of that piece of legislation about athletes. And I gave that to him, and I, this is my opinion. We, we don't need to be there, so those things were not looked at. So that's my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the Senator?
It's always good to hear from you, Senator Mayne.
Oh, thanks. I'm glad to be with my, my home bees, my nest. I'm back. So anyway, I just wanted to report on that. If you, you know, you know where I am, Benning Circle, Middle House, Dog, the Barks, whatever. So if you need me, just let me know. But I wanted to specifically talk about these two pieces of legislation, especially the public notice one that would really need to be more, and the citizenship, because both of those came from your community, our community. So. Okay.
Senator Mayne, thank you very much. We appreciate the work that you do in connection with our neighborhoods. So thank you very much, and thank you for your report tonight.
Oh, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Bye-bye. Have a nice, have a nice meeting.
Okay, thank you. Next on our communication items, we have our street light fee follow-up discussion. And counsel, thank you. There were, I missed most of the discussion, and I know a couple other council members were absent. I did go back, thanks to Nicole, our recorder, for sending me the link, got that right back up and listened to all the discussion on streetlights, which helped me. And then as well, my questions were answered by a member of the staff, Mr. Willardson, so. So I think I'm up to speed, but we want to make sure that our other council members, if they have questions or comments, that they participate in that discussion to see if this is something we want to move forward with or not. Counsel members?
I, I personally want to say thank you to you guys about the street light discussion you had the last time. This is very important for a number of people in our community. Like I said, I shared with other council member before. One of the lady, she came home late at night. She fell off from the sidewalk and she spent about fifteen thousand dollars in her, you know, saving account. And I think it's a very sad thing to, to hear that story. I appreciate that to bring it up and help the people in our community. There's a lot of people out there that need help with that because no light, sometimes they cannot see the road or sidewalk and getting a big problem for them.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, let's, maybe what I'll do is just kind of go back. The proposal here, of course, was a fee dedicated to streetlights. Now, streetlights have many issues, but to me, I think there are two major ones. One is equality of life. The other one is a safety issue. So there are those two different issues related to streetlights. Currently, they, you know, based on the information received from staff, we are falling behind a little bit more. As time passes, it keep, we're not keeping up with it. So they proposed a three-dollar increase, and that would cover the cost of maintenance and repair, et cetera, on streetlights. And that could be actually approached in one of two ways. The three dollars would cover it all. We do currently have four hundred ninety-one thousand dollars in the budget dedicated to streetlight repair and maintenance, overhead, et cetera. And if you leave that there, then two dollars would be sufficient to meet the basic needs. That does not mean that, you know, we'll solve this problem in a short amount of time. So that's kind of where we're at. Oh, and there was a proposal made, Councilwoman Lang, that we, we should take, if we increase the fee, we should take If we increase the fee, we should take the two, three dollars. We we could take the four hundred ninety-one thousand dollars and put that on sidewalk, curb and gutter. So that wasn't voted on or anything, but that was just an item uh that was brought up. Are there any other pertinent issues? Uh, that should be brought up, just as reminders of where we're at on that, what the proposal is.
Just to maybe reframe that a little bit, Mayor.
Sure.
Have a commitment to streetlights, we placed these and contracted, have these placed throughout the city, the problem is now they're aging. They're in disrepair. Um, we are trying to fund it a little bit, so this is really a different funding source, we haven't charged a fee before. The question is, do we want to just continue to try to pay for this with the general fund? And if so, does that mean a property tax increase or do we charge a? Um, a fee specific to reserve this money, streetlight repair and maintenance? And I, you know, it's it's just, it's a new fee for an old problem, something that uh. We have committed to and and are responsible for. It's a solution for that, and whether we move with that, I think Wayne's comment was, this is kind of a. You know, bringing it to your attention that we'll be looking at in the future, but it's not gonna be on next week's agenda, anything like that. I think as far as the discussion of, well, shouldn't we use it for sidewalks instead, I think we're committed to both. Now, I don't know, I'm not proposing that we have a sidewalk fee as well, we just are committed to both of those things as well as many other things. And the question of how to fund which things and which to fund first and do we have a rolling continuing fund? Or just try to do a piece mill as we go, so. I mean, that's kind of how I see the issue.
Thank you, any other comments?
I did have one question about, um, are we, is this money going to be in its own enterprise type fund? That it is only dedicated to streetlight repair, replacement and maintenance? So that we know we're keeping these monies specifically for streetlight instead of doing a fee and then. We don't use it all and we end up spending something else? I would feel better about a fee to cover it if it stays in its own enterprise type fund. That's not just put in and used for anything.
So within the guidelines of the the state accounting rules, yes, we could do that, Karen. Um, you'll notice that as. Uh, Russ was illustrating what the other cities do for comparable utility fees, he kinda lumped them together. With garbage and stormwater, uh, both of which we have separate funds. Uh, sanitation and stormwater, so unless there's something else that would prevent us from doing that, the state side, which I don't think there is, yes, we could do that.
Okay, I think it'd give us a good way to measure our improvement and how long we're really gonna need it and. If we can really spend that much every year doing the maintenance, which it sounds like with the outside contracts and that, we'll be able to do it. And get things taken care of in a timely manner.
Will there be some properties that have the fee and some properties that don't?
Yes, uh, but um, I think that actually, actually no. So the answer that if I remember Russ's presentation, Lars is no, there will be some that don't have streetlights right off the bat. That I think still get charged the fee, but they would be put on the list to have the the lights added. Russ, can you correct me if I'm wrong on that or if I've got that backwards or clarify it?
Uh, Wayne, we would, uh. There are a few, they're commercial areas, they're not residential areas. But there are a few streets that don't have lights and we would not charge them a fee until they do have lights, of course.
Okay, I couldn't remember which came first there, the chicken or the egg, so, yeah, thank you for that.
Russ, any idea how many properties that is, what percentage of commercial properties, I'm just an estimate maybe?
Um, we figured it was about a hundred and twenty lights and we have seventy-five hundred total, so. It's not a huge percentage of the city that's not lit, but um. You know, so I I don't remember the the actual streets, but uh we figured it would be about a hundred and twenty new lights.
And the other questions?
I just have a a comment, I mean, since almost everybody is going to be paying this fee. It seems to me like it might be more feasible to to take it from property taxes because. You know, there's some, there's some houses that are smaller and and less expensive and they're gonna be paying the same amount as. As someone who has a really large home and lot and. Um, and it's, it's not, uh, I don't know, I think it would be better if uh. If we put it on property taxes and then it wouldn't, it would raise. It would be an increase, a bigger increase for people who are probably more able to afford it and a smaller increase for people who have. Property that's not worth as much.
Any other comments?
Um, Mayor, could I just make a quick comment on that?
Sure.
So the one thing that we were proposing uh was that all properties be charged, including. Um. Entities that are currently non-taxable as far as property taxes go, so um. You know, as we've done with the stormwater utility, we charge government entities, churches. Um, everyone gets a bill just, you know, like they would for a, um, you know, a water utility or something like that. Um, so that was the intent with the streetlights as well, so we didn't actually figure. Uh, I mean, we have included all properties in the city in our calculations, so if we took out non-taxable areas that. Um, the, you know, the charges for. Um, the others might go up slightly, well, they definitely will go up, I don't know exactly how much.
Okay, now we've had several proposals and they're all a little different, let's see if I can summarize them. Uh, one, don't do anything at this point in time, what happens then? Well, uh, nothing happens, we just keep doing what we're doing and falling further behind. And I'll come back to that concept. Second one, uh, Councilman Nordfeldt is, uh. If I, let's see if I get this right. Get the funding, but get it from property tax, not from a streetlight tax. Or a a set fee per home. The third was uh, uh, that we. Uh, do it through a fee. And there were actually kind of two proposals there, one was a fee of three dollars and another of two dollars. Three dollars would cover future maintenance, repair, et cetera, that we went through all of that. The other proposal was two dollars and keep four hundred ninety-one thousand from general fund. Applying to that. Or from property taxes, you know, whichever. Uh, and uh. Then there was, say, take the, if we do the three dollar fee, then take the four hundred ninety-one thousand and put it on. Streets, or excuse me, on sidewalks, curb and gutter. Those are all variations of this. And since there are, is quite a difference there. The question that we really have is, is there any of those that the council can settle on with a majority? And remember, the one of those is, don't do anything. Now, one comment I will make, and this is a uh. A personal perspective. Uh, one of the great challenges I had when I dealt with the state budget. Was that it was very easy to get support for a new building, a new road. Uh, all kinds of things. But what was extremely difficult was to get funding for repair and maintenance. The challenge was, in fact, it got so bad, uh, because like, uh, well, I'll use the. The colleges as an example, colleges and universities, donors would step up to fund buildings. But they didn't want to step up and fund operations or maintenance or repairs. So uh, oftentimes, because they were donating the money, they also wanted to dictate how they were built. But the great challenge was, long term, the cost of the building paled in comparison to the. Maintenance, because maintenance goes on forever. So we worked on that, but guess what? First time there was a recession, what was the first thing to cut? Well, you cut repair and maintenance, because you can defer them, the building looks okay for a couple of years. And one of the things that makes a city look great is for its infrastructure to be in good repair. I bring that up because uh. It's an ongoing battle, it's, it it's not like a new fire station. You build a new fire station, it's great, everyone sees it. But nobody sees the repair and maintenance, and in fact, it takes years of. Uh, lack of maintenance for it to look bad. But by doing the maintenance, whether it be streetlights or buildings or roads. We save a lot of money, it is cheaper to maintain than it is to replace. I add that perspective, just as, you know, my own personal view. Uh, with that then, I need to find out so that staff can, if need be, take action or not. On any of the proposals. I've heard some of you speak in favor of each of those, so I know there's at least one on each of them, okay? Are there more than one for any of those?
I think, I think the bottom line is, we need to decide whether we do something or nothing.
Okay, Lars, that's great, let's start there.
If we decide to do something, then then let's debate the the strategies.
Okay.
I, I agree with with Lars about that, so we we eliminate the item number one is nothing. It's that you said do nothing, so we take that one out.
Well, well, wait, yes, we'll do that next, that's the next step, the first step is do nothing. Or do more than we're doing now, which will require additional funding. Is that correct, Lars? That's what we have to address. Great, appreciate that, that's the right step, so. Are, how many would rather delay this? Can I get a nod of the head or this is not a vote, this doesn't bind you in any way, it's not the end solution?
Well, here, my personal opinion, if we delay this, it's gonna have more people gonna fall down and they can run out of money from their saving account.
So you would like to, that's kind of a, you'd like to do something?
Yeah, try to do as soon as we can, because it's sad to see some people, they say.
Councilman Bueller, I think you were in the kind of the, now's not the time.
No, that's not true.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I I was muted though, so sometimes I say my best things when I'm muted. Um, I think we have a responsibility to our residents to take care of the maintenance of our city, which we share. I I think that we ought to do something, take care of that, that is.
Okay. Anyone else?
I too think we need to do something, we can't just let it sit because as it sits, it gets back and goes backwards. When we stand still, we're backing up, so we need to do something.
Okay, any other comments, by the way, that gets us to four.
So I'll just add that I did one of my little mini polls and once explained. Everyone was in favor that I spoke to of going ahead with this fee. And so I think we need to move forward. Um, from last week's presentation, I couldn't tell if, um, because Wayne stated that it didn't have to be done right this minute. So I don't know if we have what we need to in place, if we implemented it right now. Or if we just need to tell them when everything's in place, then yes, you have the. Go ahead to bring up the fee to our meetings and then um go ahead with the fee and the improvements. Because he said they were looking later in the year or up to a year before they were actually thinking about starting it, so I didn't. From that, I didn't understand really when they were going to be ready to start that process.
Well, Wayne, uh, I see you're not muted, so would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask Russ when he felt comfortable he would be ready to go. Uh, if he was given the go.
Uh, yeah, so we have not obviously done any design work for new uh new installations. Um, or any major repairs, so that would take us several months to get that ready to go. Um, you know, the matter of getting the ordinance um paperwork ready, that could be done in a few weeks. Uh, but we would not be ready to to start any major work for several months after that.
The council, of course, has that right to on anything, put a start date for any project or. Fee or even a tax increase for that matter. Uh, so yes, that's very feasible and if it were to come back, Russ could give us that specific information. And we could set a start date. So that is, any other comments? So now, we think we want to do something, the question is, what do we want to do? And uh, so the first one was, uh, do we, was property tax. Versus fee. As a source of the funds.
I'm personally more in favor of the fee than a property tax increase. Because a fee can be stopped eventually, we never, you never stop a tax increase. And a fee is more specific to an item where sometimes a tax increase. I don't know how you say so much, we'll go in there every year and keep it there, so I'm more comfortable with the fee.
I agree with Councilwoman Lang.
Yeah, I think the equal share, uh, Norfair, uh, last year brought up a very good point about. Taxes, property tax for equal share, small pay small and big pay big. But that, I think, Ken, as he brought up, very good point too about. How we're gonna stop that, if we increase and then they can keep doing that, it's hard for us to stop, good point, so. Very good.
Okay, anyone else?
I I always hate to raise taxes. But I always hate to raise taxes and call them a fee. So, you know, the people that I talked to were. Back and forth either way, fifty fifty percent said, just raise the taxes, fifty percent said. Well, I don't mind paying a fee every month, so I think we need to. I think we need to explain it as we need to, and again, if it's a fee. Once we, once we get the. Need for the fee taken care of, we can stop that fee, we don't have to keep going. And somehow, when it gets into the property tax, it it stays there.
Well, if, now, maybe Mr. Willardson can help us with this. But I thought with the proposed increases, the plan was ultimately spread over. If I recall, like thirty years, and that didn't necessarily cover a hundred percent of everything. But was that correct, Mr. Willardson?
Yes, Mayor, so what, with the three dollar fee, it it provides about. Yes, Mayor, so what, with the three dollar fee, it, it provides about five hundred thousand dollars per year for capital improvements. Now, again, this doesn't have to be, all be done at once, but we would only be able to replace roughly seventy streetlights a year at that rate. So as they begin to deteriorate, and the underground wiring fails, it would be over thirty years before we could replace just those lights that have the direct buried underground wiring. So it, it's not likely to go away very soon. Or at least the need for the fee is not likely to go away.
So right now, I'm at dawn's half and half. So let's see, we have Councilman Fitissimano?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, what, if there is a benefit, because there are at least one of my colleagues here who's leaning towards the tax increase versus levying a fee. Is there a particular benefit to that? Versus the fee option?
Well, Councilman Nordfeld could speak up, but I think the thing he mentioned was that it impacted people differently. A fee is the same for every residence, for example. Whereas a property tax would vary from house to house because of the value assigned to each home. So in other words, a small home would pay a little bit less than a large home. To simplify that. Of course, it'd be all over the place, but that would, as I see it, would be the advantage. Councilman Nordfeld, I get that, okay?
I, I think one more advantage, which, you know, some people have said is a disadvantage, is that, that with the fee, that money has to be spent for that thing. And, and with, with the tax, it gives the council more flexibility, that, that if, if it's better to spend that money on something else, then it could be. And I, I know that that's probably not what Russ wanted to hear, but, but but it gives, it gives the council more flexibility.
I have an issue with that, just because I don't think it's as transparent to say, we're gonna raise your property taxes for this, oh, but we might spend it for this. Whereas the fee, they know what they're spending their money on, and I think there'll be more security with that than a bait and switch and the non-transparency.
Yeah, I, I think Lars, I think you, you bring it up at the, Lars, basically, to kind of broad matter now, because it not focused in the street light. You can say, you said you can use that money something else if they want to. So I think there's a really, very different kind of subject matter we're gonna discuss here tonight, too.
And I guess as I'm thinking out loud and saying this, I can imagine how sketchy this math would get. But is there an option for a proportional fee, rather that is maybe contingent on or associated with home value as a tax would be, except that it's a fee, so that it's assigned directly towards this particular expenditure? Or is that not an option?
Well, I, Wayne can answer that, but I, I will say that a fee is very easy to do, because we're already doing that. A property tax is easy to do, because we're already doing that. To do a proportional fee would require some new system. But I also wanted to go back to Lars' question real quick, flexibility. Unless there is a state law limiting it, the council still controls flexibility. So in other words, during a recession, when you need to change things, could you reassign that? The answer is yes. So the council still holds it. It's good faith to put it into a enterprise fund or something, but correct that too, Wayne, if I'm wrong. So Mr. Pyle?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I, I think the answer to Jake's question, just like you said, Mayor, any system could be devised. It would be a new system, it might be a little complicated. I think Jake actually alluded to the fact that he was thinking along that line as well. If you tried to put together some sort of system based on home value, then you're almost right back into the property tax valuation system anyway, and you're kind of double administering the same sort of a, a thought process. So that might not be very feasible. The closest thing I could think of, that we already do, is like in stormwater, where we do an equivalent residential unit. And that way, we charge proportional fees to various types of development, commercial and residential, depending mostly on how much square footage they're covering. And there are some limits to that, there's some compromises made to that, which Russ could go over a little bit more, but that's, that's the closest I can think of to that.
Yeah. And then the flexibility?
Yeah, as you said, I mean, that's really up to you guys anyway, how you define that, and can change that from year to year, too.
So, and if I remember correctly, the the proportional fee was on street frontage for, you know, commercial?
Yeah. So a business might only have one light in front of their business, but if they have eight hundred feet of frontage, they'll pay the equivalent of eight homes for their business. So, and I think that's an important note, because we have so many municipal-owned, and not always a West Valley municipal-owned property, that's tax exempt. And so those businesses would end up paying, were on a property tax, they would not. One illustration is our power plant up by Frida Lay. It is now owned by UAMPS, which is a group of municipal cities that do their own power. And we don't collect sales tax, I mean, property tax on that. So they would end up paying their fair share of this maintenance of the streetlights.
Interesting discussion.
Yeah, if we do property tax, they'll be left out and not have to help pay for it.
So where do we go from here? I think I ended up with three and a half for a fee, two and a half for property tax, and one, I wasn't sure. He wanted more information.
I, maybe I didn't make myself clear. I, I go with the fees, you know, yeah. So that's.
Okay, so, if that's correct, then I think we have Wayne a majority, because I would go with a fee over a property tax.
Okay, then, just to recap how I understood, from a staff standpoint, Mayor, what we would do is come back with a proposal for adoption under a fee structure for the council at the point in time where the Public Works Department has put together the framework and structure of what we would be doing, and under what kind of schedule we'd be doing it.
Yes. Now, I, I have to go back and clarify. Was there interest in doing a higher fee and taking the four hundred ninety-one thousand dollar sales tax, or general fund, excuse me, revenue, and moving that to sidewalks? That was brought up. Excuse me, sidewalks, curb and gutter?
Mayor, I have a, I mean, an inclination that way, but I'd like to just, you know, maybe not decide that today, see that coming. What I, and I think Wayne, what I would prefer, rather than having this discussion in six, seven, eight months, after Russ has put together a repair schedule and so forth, I'd rather see it while we can still remember it, and just have a a date in the future when it would be becoming effect, so that the schedule can follow the approval, and then we're, we're ready to go. Twelve months down the road, we know we've got it in place, we're doing the schedule with purpose, that this has been approved when we're ready. That make any sense?
Yeah, for sure. We can certainly make it a priority from a planning standpoint, and then bring it back to the, the council with all reasonable, you know, effort and diligence to get it ready. I think, I don't think Russ is that far from having the ability to bring that back.
Well, if I understood, oh, go ahead. Comes effective as of such and such date in next year, or whenever, so that it matches the repair schedule. I'm not saying let's rush and get a, a schedule put together. I'm just saying we could pass the ordinance that it will be, come effective upon, or will, on a, in a future date, we'll start implementing this one, we're ready to go, but we won't have to bring them back to the council at that point.
Yeah, okay, I see what you're saying. So we just bring it back to the council in the near future with an effective date? We can do that.
Yeah, and the effective date, if I understood it, that does not mean you could start, you know, now, but you could estimate when you could start.
And make that the date, yeah.
Yeah. And that, and that's reasonable to do?
Yep.
That's a question?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. Sounds like we're there. Hearing no further comments? Public Works Projects. Mr. Pyle, who's? Oh, there's Dan Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor, it's either gonna be Russ or Dan, one or the other.
Well, I saw Russ, and then he moved, but Dan Johnson actually turned his video on. That's my clue, when they turn their video on, and I see their smiling face. They say, Mr. Johnson, floor's yours.
All right, thank you, sir. So today, we'd just like to talk about some capital improvement projects that are coming up in the, in this year and the coming years. So share my screen real quick, and instead of preparing a PowerPoint, you guys see that okay? All right, can you see my screen okay?
Well, I can see COVID-19 vaccination information.
Yep, so instead of sharing the PowerPoint, we decided, I'm just gonna walk you through the projects from the, the web, the, a map that we've got available on the website, so that if you ever wanted to refer back to it, or refer the public to it, you're welcome to, to do so. So, you know, I can get that up. We'll start the story, but, so just a, so this is just a map that we've got available on the Engineering Division website that will give the council, or anybody, the public, an opportunity to see what we're doing. And so, so first and foremost, first project on this list is the forty-one-hundred South Reconstruction Project that you're all familiar with. And we're, we anticipate that Geneva Rock is gonna come back in the next couple of weeks, and finish up the stamped concrete that remains undone, and, and then plant the trees, and finalize the punch list items, and grind the bumps out of pavement, and, and and kind of do the finishing touches before they, they leave us. So we anticipate that, I don't know, end of May, we're, we're kind of done with, with the, the work out there. The next project is the twenty-five-forty South Beagle Road Extension. So a little bit of context, I'll zoom out just a little bit. This is next to the New Mountain View Corridor, but it's an extension of twenty-five-forty South that connects out to seventy-two-hundred West. And we will be building this blue angle, you know, right angle piece of this, of this road that will make a connection to the newly constructed South Frontage Road realignment, and the twenty-four-hundred South Bridge over Mountain View Corridor. And so we anticipate construction to start within, I don't know, it's probably May or June before that gets rolling, but we anticipate that that will be completed this year. Another project that we're working on is the twenty-seven-hundred West Improvement Project. This is a project that we've been working with UTA on some federal tiger grants funds. These, these funds kind of improve access to transit. And in this case, we're improving the roadway in areas where there's not curb and gutter, and the road's not wide enough for bike lanes. We're, we're adding bike lanes and sidewalk in many areas, but we're also putting in walls and lights and landscaping in the park strip, similar to what we've done between Lancer Way and forty-one-hundred South. So you'll, you should be seeing some, some additional agreements with UTA, and some more matching funds in the, in the coming weeks and months, but that's anticipated to begin, begin May-June timeframe, and completing this year as well. Another little storm drain project we've got going on is the Stanton Drive Storm Drain Project. Stanton Drive is, is east of Forty-Eighth West and south of thirty-one-hundred South. And it's just, this is the, kind of a neighborhood drainage problem in the area of just west of City Park. And we will be putting a new storm drain in Stanton Drive. Currently, much of this, this whole area drains, really just surface drains, and kind of have some localized flooding problems. So with our stormwater utility fees, this, this is an improvement project we're making to improve some localized flooding in this area, and we anticipate this going out of bid relatively soon, and completing this year as well.
Yeah, and are we placing the asphalt on that road as well when we're done, or is it just gonna be a patch?
Well, we'll patch it, and, and you're kind of jumping to the next project on the list. You can see all these roads that have various thin surface treatments. So you see, the next project on our list is just the Operations Division Annual Maintenance. And so these roads are scheduled to receive either a polymer, a flurry seal, or crack seal. They're, they're not getting overlaid this year, so yes, there'll be a patch, but there'll, there will also be a flurry seal, let's see, the green is a crack seal and flurry seal on Stanton Drive itself.
On any of these side streets, are you gonna fix any of the sidewalks as you go through, since you're in the area?
No, with this project, we're really sticking with the storm drain, and, and then with the thin surface treatments, that is truly only pavement.
Because we have some that are a six-foot drop, I mean, six foot, six-inch drop?
You, you mean like settled sidewalk?
Yep.
Yeah. Yep, I think that's definitely a discussion we'd love to have one day. We've got a lot of those all over the city, and, and we're working on them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. The next project is, is just what we just talked about, the thin surface asphalt treatments. And so you can look on your street and see if the Public Works Department is doing, it has, has maintenance work scheduled on your road, and so just a resource to know that's out there. This, the twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one pedestrian ramp project, so Karen, as you, as you mentioned, we have lots of areas in the city as well that have sidewalk with no ramps at, at the corners, like not even an, an old ramp, it doesn't meet current standards, but, but literally no ramp. And so that, what this project does is, we've identified a handful of places throughout the city that, that have existing sidewalk. Again, this doesn't even address the displacement, the, the failure issues of sidewalks, but because those are very abundant, but these are just kind of, just generally providing access to the sidewalk at ramps where, or at corners where there exists none currently. And so we're working with housing to get some CDVG funds, in addition, in addition to some classy road money to, to tackle fairly decent amount of, of these bed ramps throughout the city, but and we, we selected these based on their location in relation to maybe school walking routes, or parks, or kind of a higher priority type of a pedestrian ramp. The Tecumseh Drive Storm Drain Project, this is a little storm drain project that's similar to Stanton Drive Storm Drain Project, in that it collects some, some localized drainage. This particular neighborhood drains to this field, and just drains there, there's no outfall. And so we have public storm drain, stormwater that just discharges onto private property. And so we're, we're doing a little project to install some storm drain on Tecumseh, and, and then we'll, we'll connect that into the existing storm drain on forty-eight-hundred West. And we actually just opened bids, and so you'll, you'll be seeing a contract award for this in the coming weeks as well. And again, that comes out of the stormwater utility. This is a, not a big project, but kind of a, it's a perhaps meaningful project to this neighborhood, where we will be filling in this short little segment of, of no road on Hawkeye Street. in this short little segment of of no road on Hawkeye Street, um, just west of Ranger High School on the other side of Bangator. And, uh, so we intend to get that rolling in in the coming months. And, um, again, you'll see those, uh, you'll see contracts coming not too distant future. We haven't bid that yet, but we're not too far out. The Crystal Avenue Sidewalk Project, this this comes from State Safe Routes to School money in addition to Class C roads and stormwater utility money as well. Uh, we will be, uh, design, building a sidewalk. This is actually scheduled for next year. Um, we've got a few design challenges that we're working through, but, um, but it's our intention to, I think, we're we've, we're in the preliminary phases of design and we anticipate, excuse me, anticipate that, uh, you should be seeing something, well, towards the end of the year, I think you'll have a better idea of exactly where the sidewalk's gonna be. I do, we're, well, last time we met, it was the north side, and I think we're still we're sticking with that. But those are the kinds of issues we're working out with Crystal Avenue along with some drainage challenges. But but we anticipate that that will be, um, we'll be seeing that next year. Uh, forty-seven-hundred South between, uh, fortieth West and fifty-six-hundred West. This again is a very large federally funded project that we're sharing with Kern's Metro Township. This is a reconstruction similar in scope to forty-one-hundred South that we're just completing, uh, where we'll be left with a a great road, consistent cross section and and great pavement for the foreseeable future, in addition to sidewalks. And, um, in this particular seg- segment of roadway, uh, West Valley City owns and maintains roughly about thirty percent, generally everything west of forty-eight-hundred West and a little bit here as you approach, um, fortieth West because the the road curves outside of the city. So this is roughly a seventy-thirty split between Kern's Metro Township and West Valley City. Um, but it's federally funded. Uh, we're, you'll actually be seeing a an invitation in the, uh, in May, in early May, we have to do a reevaluation of the of the environmental document. And so there's a a public hearing involved in that process. And so you'll be seeing that. You're welcome to come participate. It'll actually be a virtual event where the residents can come in and and ask questions about their their property. But there were enough changes made from the time that we did the environmental document in twenty-fifteen and through Final Design Now that that it was required that we did a reevaluation of the environment, of a few elements of the environmental document. And so, um, but regarding schedule of this project, we anticipate, th- this, there's still a lot of complicated issues where we've we're working with, uh, the Union Pacific on permitting of the railroad crossing reconstruction, which is certainly a complication. And, um, and funding, we're working through some funding issues as well, but we anticipate that, uh, if all goes well and everything falls into place, that this is under construction. We bid it this fall and begin construction in January with a early, with an early action item of reconstructing the bridge over the Utah Salt Lake Canal just west of fortieth West. So anyways, that's a general overview of forty-seven-hundred South. And, uh, the Crosstown Trail, so as you're well aware, the Crosstown Trail is built in segments, and we've got, uh, some, uh, federal funds under the Transportation Alternative Program, uh, to kind of work on a solution for the gap that that exists between twenty-seven-hundred West and Bangator Highway. And so we are working on an environmental document right now that, um, will either, it's likely to be some kind of some com- combination of bike lanes on the roadway, sidewalks, um, behind the curb, and potential use of of the, uh, maintenance road along the canal. And so that's anticipated. We have federal funds and it's anticip- we're we're looking towards the construction of this in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four, kind of in that ballpark. Uh, another federally funded project that we will begin an environmental document on here shortly will be the widening and reconstruction of Parkway Boulevard between Mountain View Corridor and, uh, sixty-four-hundred West. So with with, uh, the work that Mountain View is doing, their w- widening and reconstruction stops just, you know, several hundred feet west of Mountain View Corridor. And as you're well aware, the condition of that existing two-lane shoulderless road is in very poor shape, and the only repair that we could do would be a complete reconstruction. And, uh, and at that point, we'll we'll address the widening capacity issues that that exist as well. And so, um, we, uh, we will likely start the environmental document on that shortly, um, in the next several months. And we anticipate twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four, somewhere in that timeframe to to build that road. And we have roughly about five, five and a half million dollars in federal funds to, uh, construct the roadway. At this point, we think that's sufficient funding to to do what we need to do out there. The next federally funded project we've got in the queue is a reconstruction of thirty-six-fifty South or Lancer Way that we're all very familiar with, right here, just south of City Hall. We have roughly about half of the funds secured from from the Federal Surface Transportation Program, and we're working on a an additional ask to get the rest of the money that we need from them, um, this year. And so we hope to have that project fully funded. Uh, and, you know, minus the city's matching funds that will likely come from, uh, Class C roads or, uh, stormwater utility or something to that effect. But, um, but largely, you know, we all drive that road frequently, and it's in pretty rough shape, and it it is, uh, central to a lot of activity, both at Fairborn Station and the, uh, the UTA Hub and Valley Fair Mall and City Hall. And so it's definitely a road that needs some good attention. And, um, we, our estimate is roughly six and a half plus million dollars to reconstruct that road in the way that it would need to be. And so, uh, we feel, we're getting close to to funding it, but just know that it's on the horizon, and we're looking at kind of a twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five timeframe for that construction. And then the last project on the list is just, of course, UDOT's Mountain View Corridor that, uh, um, is anticipated to open up late May, from what I'm hearing. So they're, they're working on the final touches, and we're in touch with them, and we will start our our own punch list of their work items. Um, they're starting on the landscaping and things like that around thirty-five-hundred South and fifty-six-hundred West. So that'll be an interesting change for that part of town. And, um, definitely looking forward to the the work being completed. So that concludes my presentation. I'll take any questions if you have any.
Counsel, any questions?
This is a comment. I think it's a very good outlook. Um, a lot of those roads they're speaking about are almost cattle trails. So having them improved will be a great addition to the city.
Absolutely.
I appreciate all the work.
Hearing no further questions or comments? Mr. Johnson, thank you very much. Uh, good presentation, good update. With that, then, we'll go to parking ordinance. And Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a relatively straightforward item here. Uh, council had discussion a few weeks ago about go about possibly, um, modifying our current parking ordinance to allow this, or I'm sorry, to sort of extend this prohibition on parking, um, to within five feet of a public or a private driveway. So brought it back to the council, sort of in this ordinance form, just to see if that kind of met, uh, what the council was thinking, uh, along the lines of, or if they still wanted to proceed, or or however the council would like to approach, Mayor.
Thank you, Council.
Wayne, this is the most simple, straightforward action that I have seen in twelve years. And I think that it's an appropriate fit. It just says, uh, you know, one thing, five feet. I think it's understandable and enforceable, and I think, uh, great job.
So it says, like, driver has to stay with the car if you're close to a mailbox. So does that mean my Amazon person can't bring my box up real quick? That's my only question.
Don't know the answer to that. Um,
Because especially in a cul-de-sac, there is no space on each side.
Yeah, there there are, there are potentially streets where there will be no parking. Uh, what's that one, Manway, that has all the, uh, twin homes? That one comes to mind. There might possibly be others.
So I didn't know if we needed a provision, if you're just dropping off a two thirty-second package? Or if that's in there and I'm just not reading it correctly?
Yeah, I, uh, you know, like, like Steve said, we just brought this forward as the council asked us to consider it from last time around. So I'm not sure. There might be some other place in the ordinance that already addresses that, or there may not be. Not an expert on that. Um, Eric or Chief Jacobs, I don't know that Chief Jacobs would know off the top of her head, or Eric, either one. But if we don't, we'd go back and research that, too. If the council wants us to bring this forward, uh, you know, it's it's only on as a communications item anyway. So we could bring it forward as a resolution for adoption and and check out that question at the same time.
Well, I think there's, there's the issue of, there, there very briefly, and I think this is true of a lot of cities and a lot of locations that they just say, hey, uh, we're just not going to deal with it because they're only there for, you know, thirty seconds to a minute to run up to the porch and back, UPS, Federal Express, any of them, Amazon. And I think unless someone makes an issue of it, I think it's just kind of accepted. No one does anything about it.
I wouldn't want to make any changes along that line and get an argument of what's delivery and what's not. Also, the letter carriers themselves, they block driveway every day when they put the mail in. They come to a complete stop, and then they're blocking my driveway. But, uh, you know, I understand they're not gonna be there very long. They're not gonna sit at lunch. So I think that the, uh, change that's communicated here, I would support that. I'm not in favor of fiddling with the rest of our parking ordinances, just because we are considering this change.
Hey?
So I guess, I was just gonna say, if we have an issue with an officer that gets extra zealous and says, well, this is the law, I'm gonna give you a ticket if you leave your vehicle, even to drop off one package, I guess we, as we can change the ordinance back to how it was if it seems to be problematic.
We can also deal with that in the way we do many of those right now, which is we just, uh, deal with them at the administrative level from either, uh, we cancel them out, or we get a complaint, we take some action at supervisory level. We can do that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Hearing no further comments or questions? Then we'll, uh, move on to the next item, which is legislative wrap-up. I believe all of you received a summary, uh, an excellent summary, uh, very well done on a number of issues, some that we had talked about previously in council meeting, and others that didn't receive quite as much council review, but certainly staff review. So, and we have Lincoln shirts on the line with us to, uh, answer any questions. Uh, Lincoln, yeah, I appreciate the work, uh, whoever put all that together. I assume you were involved. Very good summary of some key issues that the city was dealing with.
Mayor, thanks for the time this afternoon. Uh, as mentioned, we did put a summary together. Uh, if you have any questions as it relates to the summary, please let us know. This is obviously not, um, ubiquitous in terms of its coverage of things that affected, uh, West Valley City. It's just a snapshot of some of the key policy areas that would be of interest to the council and areas where, as I was looking through it, thought you may get some questions from residents where you'd want some information on various things that were contemplated, uh, by the legislature. We, as staff, will be going through a more detailed update that will be provided to the department heads on any sort of law change that will require an update to the ordinance or a policy or rule that we have within the city. Uh, within the update, as you saw, I did do a brief synopsis of the overall state budget. Uh, talked a fair amount about the infrastructure investments that were made in the state through the work of Representative Denigan and Representative Mike Schultz, who led those efforts, uh, whereby West Valley City fared fairly well in those considerations. As is typical of the legislative session on transportation, there's always a conversation around bonding. Uh, this year, the legislature decided not to bond in the magnitude that they originally contemplated and instead used surplus revenues to pay for most of the infrastructure investment. Uh, in addition to the infrastructure investment, there are a host of issues. I did listen into Senator Maine's, uh, presentation to the council, and she did touch on many of these issues as well. Uh, one of the notables that we worked on in coordination with Nicole Seemack, which was, uh, the public notice, uh, requirements that we were successful in getting changed this year. So that was a huge one procedurally, uh, for the city. And then there were a host of other issues that we worked on that I have covered with the council i- in previous meetings, ranging from billboard regulation to accessory dwelling units to how we handle inspections and design standards within the city. All in all, I think we fared fairly well within the legislative session. It was certainly a unique one with, uh, balancing COVID and the health restrictions in place. Uh, the public input during the legislative session was obviously constrained as well. But with all that being said, the legislature passed just shy of five hundred bills, balanced a twenty-three billion dollar budget, uh, and did fairly well by West Valley City. So we're pretty happy as staff in terms of how things played out. Uh, and as usual, Mayor, I'm happy to provide any sort of individual update to council members as they see fit, or if they have additional questions. Uh, with that, I'm open to any questions. Don't want to take much time on the agenda. I have the the update in your inbox and and happy to answer any questions at this point, Mayor.
I would be remiss from my own background if I didn't say twenty-three billion. Awful.
It is, uh, it's getting bigger and bigger every year. It grows by about a billion or so every year, Mayor.
Yeah. I must admit, I liked it a lot better when it was like about eight, nine billion. A lot easier to do.
One thing I will mention is many of you have probably read in the paper, with the federal effort, uh, that was passed to do some additional stimulus, there's a pretty robust effort taking place at the staff level to get up to speed. Much of that twenty-three billion oftentimes is federal funds, as you looked. And of course, this year is a bit of an anomaly in that the state receives substantial federal funding through both stimulus as well as CARES Act funding. So I think that's a source of dollars as well.
Yeah, when they take those out of the budget, I'm sure every elected official in the legislature and the governor's office will claim they cut the state budget by twenty percent.
I think it was somewhere around eight billion dollars this will, this year in federal, uh, revenues that came into the state.
Counsel, any further comments? Lincoln, you said a host of other bills. Uh, I I think it was more than a host.
I think this year we were tracking about a hundred and twenty pieces of legislation across the municipal services. So we, we had a full agenda this year. There's no doubt about that.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to our, uh, council calendar. Anything? Not hearing anything. Potential future agenda items? Not hearing anything.
Mayor?
Yes.
Maybe we want to put on the agenda, uh, our schedule or our plan to return to a little more normalcy in our meetings.
Uh, that would be fine. Currently, what we've been doing is we've been renewing our electronic option every approximately thirty days. Uh, we have to send in a letter, and we left it that as soon as, uh, now, I I will make this comment, and then the council can change it. Uh, Dawn and I are in a situation where we've received a vaccination. So, uh, technically, we're ready to some degree. Uh, I don't think that applies to the rest of you. And you may, for other reasons, and please don't share those reasons here. But when it gets to, um, you know, most of the council, we can actually start anytime holding council meetings and inviting people in because we have this electronic capability now. So you could still stay at your home until you've received the vaccination, uh, been immunized on this, uh, for several more months, if that's what it turns out to be. Now, they're more optimistic than that, but we'll see. So it's however you want to do it. With that, then, uh, Dawn, uh, what I suggest is, if it, this issue, if you want us to start, staff could handle people coming, social distancing. if, this issue, if you want us to start, staff could handle people coming, social distancing, masks, which are still required. And we could even have our anchor location and still have each of you participate electronically. Or, you know, we can hold off on that even until some later date. Do you have any particular guidance you want to give to us in looking at that, other than just talking about it again?
My thought is, if we want to discuss it, we need to get it on an agenda. So that's the only reason I would propose it as a future agenda item.
Let's see, it seems like it's been a couple of weeks since I signed the last electronic one. Nicole, do you remember when that comes up again?
Yes, Mayor, that expires on March 31st. So if we want to continue without an anchor location, we would need to post another memorandum for the next 30 days. So that would cover all of April. Or we could no longer post those and, as you said, have an anchor location where we allow public to participate. And the council, of course, could still participate via Zoom, as you were saying.
Okay, and on that, we don't have to have a resolution or anything like that on going back to our anchor location. We just decide and we go back. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. There's no requirement for us to continue signing that memo. It's just up to the council and what they're comfortable with.
Okay, and looking at a calendar. So we technically have two more meetings before then. I'm not sure if you want to do it next week. We're probably already scheduled, Wayne. I don't know what we have on the agenda. We could talk about it again on the 30. But if not, then we will do another month, since we do these a month at a time.
And Mayor, if I can just note that we do have a fifth Tuesday this month. So there are no meetings scheduled on March 30th.
Yeah, okay, sorry, you're right. So we have our one next week. If we do do the letter, it takes the urgency off. We can talk about it more and see where things are. So do you want it on next week or next month? It's awfully quiet.
This week is fine.
We'll do a brief discussion, kind of like a little bit more than tonight, but not much more next week. Is that okay, Wayne?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We got that.
Get that on there. Just put it on as a communication discussion item.
Mayor, would it be helpful for the council to let Angel know the vaccination status? I don't know that anybody wants to share it on a public forum, but then at least administration has an idea who's had both their shots and who hasn't.
That would be fine. But yes, we normally do not want to. There were reasons for my stating publicly, you know, my situation. But that's different because we don't want to disclose any confidential information on health concerns. Everybody knows my age, so I didn't surprise anybody.
I just didn't know that would be helpful.
Been disclosing that for the last couple of decades. Okay. Counsel reports? Dawn, you got to unmute. Or at least I see your lips moving. Maybe he's just having a snack. For some reason, Dawn cannot unmute his. Is there a problem there?
Councilor Christensen, I just sent you a request. You should be able to accept an unmute request?
I just said that. My problem is I've disappeared from my Zoom screen. So I don't know what I'm doing.
Well, do you want to do, do you have a council report?
No.
Oh, okay. There were several of us in attendance at this news conference, press release and all that we did here at City Hall earlier today seemed to go very well. And I've been told that they did an extract. I'm not quite sure what will be covered, but they will do that for our inside the video, inside the city video in our next meeting. So you'll get a report on that. Anything else? No need for a closed session? I'm looking for a motion then.
Motion adjourned.
Without objection, we will stand adjourned. And hearing no objections, it was unanimous. We'll see you in about eight or nine minutes.